This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome to the GoToMeeting attendee quickstart. This video will demonstrate how to join a GoToMeeting session, the in-session controls, and the ways to participate during a meeting. In order to join a GoToMeeting session...
All right. Welcome to the Alpena City Council meeting on May 18th, 2020. Call the order, please.
Clerk Soick calling order. Hess?
Councilwoman Hess here.
Johnson?
Mayor Protem Johnson here.
Mitchell?
Councilwoman Mitchell here.
Noack?
Councilman Noack here.
And Wollagora?
Mayor Wollagora here. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Thank you. Um, any modifications to the agenda this evening from council or staff? Um, or anyone joining? I'm sorry?
Johnson, I have none.
Okay. For anyone joining us at a virtual meeting for the first time, um, we'll have a pause here shortly for anyone that would like to make public comment. First off, approval of the minutes. Any issues with the regular or closed session minutes from May 4th, 2020 from council or staff? Hearing no one, we'll move on. So now, um, any citizen hearing before council on the agenda or non-agenda items are allowed, five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time tonight with the exception of city budget, uh, public hearing that you can be allowed to address council. So if you'd like to, um, please make that known now. Okay. Seeing or hearing no one, we'll move on. Um, the consent agenda this evening has bills to be allowed in the amount of $415,450.57.
I move re-approve the consent agenda as presented. Councilman Noack?
You? Okay.
Mayor Protem second.
Clerk Soick calling the roll. Hess?
Hess, yes.
Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Noack?
Noack, yes.
And Wollagora?
Wollagora, hi.
Motion carried.
All right. Thank you. Uh, no presentations or announcements this evening. I do have, uh, two proclamations to read. Excuse me. Uh, the first one is a proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical services has evolved to a state where our paramedics can stabilize patients with IV medications, breathing treatments, heart monitoring and defibrillation, and even surgical airway procedures. And whereas the city of Alpena has been providing emergency ambulance service for 83 years and countywide ambulance service for 40 years. And whereas city paramedics work hand in hand with rural township, first responders, emergency physicians, and other medical professionals. And whereas EMS can and often does make the difference between life and death. And whereas the quality of life for all citizens of Alpena County is enhanced by the immediate availability of 100% advanced life support response 24/7. And whereas, uh, air facility transfers of critical, critically ill or injured patients from Alpena to larger hospitals hours away is an important part of our EMS mission. Whereas injury prevention and home safety are also important to the fire EMS mission and are addressed aggressively in our community risk reduction programs. And whereas President Gerald Ford declared November 3rd through the 10th, 1974 as the first National Emergency Medical Services Week to recognize the critical role that EMS plays in communities across the nation and globe. And whereas the national theme for the 2020 EMS Week is Ready Today, Preparing for Tomorrow. Therefore, by virtue of the power vested in me as the mayor of the city of Alpena, I declare that the week of May 17th through the 23rd, 2020 be designated as EMS Week in the city of Alpena and ask citizens to recognize and support the excellent work of our Alpena Fire Department paramedics and their first responder partners countywide. And my second proclamation this evening is for High School Senior Recognition Day. Whereas May marks the graduation of high school seniors from Alpena High School and ACES Academy. And whereas more than 280 students will graduate from Alpena High School and ACES Academy. And whereas schools are community linchpins, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in a common enterprise. And whereas it is of utmost importance that we, as a community, do all that we can to encourage and celebrate these graduates during this time when our traditional ways of celebrating them are not possible. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Wollagora, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Alpena, on behalf of the citizens of Alpena, specifically graduating seniors, do hereby proclaim May 29th, 2020 as High School Senior Recognition Day within the city of Alpena. Right. Next up is our public hearing, um, on the city budget. So I'll open the public hearing and a report by city clerk, treasurer, finance director, and our city manager. Anna would like to go first, I guess.
Okay. Um, nothing has changed since I presented the budget on May 4th. It still is a balanced budget. There are some things that I'm waiting for decisions on, and we may have those so that the budget will be available for the June 1st meeting for approval. One thing I do have to mention is the truth in taxation. And last year, um, the truth in taxation calculation had a result of .9799. And we chose to levy the same millage as the year before. So that meant, um, since we are technically levying higher than the .9799, um, I had to bring that up in the meeting. So this year for 2020, the calculation is 1.0051, but we're still limited to one mil. So, or one times the previous millage of 16.1066. So it's still the same as last year. The DDA's millage did go down a little bit. Last year is 1.9858, and this year it's 1.9812. I believe that's the number. Um, and then for the TBTA, um, that millage was voted on in November and will be increased to one mil. It used to be .645. Well, that's all I have right now. Does anybody have any questions on anything?
Looks like no. Rachel, do you have anything?
The only thing that I wanted to add is...
I know what you were on the...
Oh, sorry. Um, and I'm, I'm not sure what's normally done during the public hearing here, but I did want to note a couple of things. The water and sewer rates, um, depending on, um, what the recommendation and approval is this evening, um, so that will be input into the budget for, um, the final on June 1st. And then we're still waiting to hear, um, what will happen with fireworks. And there may be a couple of other tweaks based upon any, um, comments that we get. But other than that, um, as Anna indicated, we do have a, a balanced budget, which was a, a, um, huge feat, um, for our staff. And, um, you know, we are, um, reduced on capital projects this year, as we noted at the last council meeting. But again, um, if we do come back with, um, a, you know, less than anticipated revenue loss, we might be able to put some of those projects back in. But again, um, we wanted to be very conservative at this time, given the uncertain circumstances right now. So that's all I had to add. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I will open it up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make comment on the budget or budget process? Okay. Hearing or seeing no one, um, I will move on. Uh, any written comments received by the clerk's office?
No.
So we'll close the public hearing and, um, open it up to council discussion. Anyone from council, uh, have any questions or would like to make any specific comment? We can start around the table so we don't jump on each other, I guess. Is Danny Mitchell?
I have none here. Good to go.
Okay. Amber Hess?
Hess here. Um, no further questions at this time.
Okay. Mike Noack?
Councilman Noack, uh, no further questions.
Hey. Mayor Protem Cindy Johnson?
Um, Mayor Protem Johnson. I did have a couple of issues, and I had emailed Anna earlier in the week. Um, so I had emailed Anna about the HSA accounts for the employees that we took away and what that does to our budget. She did tell me that, um, they were, we were planning on paring that back. And it was one of the few things that we could cut from the employees without, you know, asking for the unions because it's not in the contract. I have a hard time cutting back on, um, employee benefits when we're adding a brand new program to the budget. And I'm talking about recycling. I am a recycler. I'm all for recycling. I'm the big, one of the biggest cheerleaders for recycling, but without a clear path forward on how we're going to pay for recycling in the future, the costs associated with it. At our last meeting, it was said that, you know, maybe we needed to hire an employee. Those are things that add to our budget. And if we don't know those costs going forward, to put a project in the budget without knowing, um, what, what is going to cost us? What, what, what are we doing with recycling? So we have $79,000 in the budget for recycling. I haven't seen, what does, what does the $79,000 get us? One thing that I don't want to see happen with recycling is, um, that we get into a recycling program, which I fully support for the city. And then we can't fund it. And then we have to take money out of the recycling program from the surcharge that the residents pay to support what we're doing in the city. And if we do that, and we have to do that to support the program, the whole recycling program will collapse. And it's just not, it's not something that I am willing to take a chance on at this time. I would like to see the recycling taken out of the budget. I would like to see a comprehensive, um, study and how much it's going to cost year after year. What are we doing? What are we doing for recycling? So bins in the park, what does that mean? If we need extra employees, what are we talking about? Extra employees, summer employees, what happens when the summer employees leave? Then regular staff who is already overworked, um, getting ready to close down summer stuff, get ready for fall events. Who, who's going to pick up that stuff? These are questions that I'd like answered. And I'd like to, if we're going to move forward with recycling in the city and in, and the facilities, um, that the city operates and the parks, I would like to see what that looks like. So, um, that being said, um, I would like to talk about taking recycling out. Looking at, and I can tell you the HSA accounts when we, um, took this to, um, to the groups. It saved us money. It, it helped them. And then to suddenly take it out of the budget. So if we're going to wean it out of the budget, and I understand that HSA and insurance runs from January to December, unlike our fiscal year. But then I think if that's what we're going to do, we have to have a conversation about weaning it out, um, of our budget instead of just pulling it out because we can. I think our employees are hard workers. I don't think that they should be the ones that suffer the brunt of, if we can help it. I mean, there's many years that, um, that, 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 that they pay the price if, if our budget is tight. And I don't, I just don't think it's fair. That being said, it kind of looks like we may be going into union negotiations. If we're going to go into union negotiations, I think that, um, we should talk about raises because in the budget, it's everybody at 2%, but we don't know that's what everybody's going to get if we're going to negotiate. That being said, since everyone has to tighten their belt and everyone has to give something, I think that admin, unless it's by contract that we have to do otherwise, I think that admin 1% is, is, is warranted, um, in this year. Those, those are my comments.
Okay. Um, I would, I would like to, um, I had, uh, similar concerns about the HSA, and I, I was basically going to ask, um, what we could, what staff thought we could replace, um, with that. And then with Cindy bringing up the, the recycling and, and can, Anna, do you know, because the question was asked, I, I hope I'm not, um, giving you a point blank question, but if you don't, then that's fine. We can work with it later. But do you know a comparison between what the HSA cost would be that we pulled from the budget compared to what the recycling is? Is it very, is it similar?
Um, I know the HSA amount was about $28,000. Off the top of my head for recycling, I don't know. But if Rich is on the call, maybe he remembers that figure?
Yeah. 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 It was, it was, uh, about $14,000 was the local match on that. Most of it was coming from potential grant through Eagle.
But does, and I just want to throw that out, but that doesn't include the employees' wages, whether they're summer help or not. This, this only includes the bins. It's my understanding from the meeting that I was in. So it doesn't include the extras that go with it. Right?
Correct. It was capital acquisition grant. We have, we have people out right now collecting the trash out of the parks every day. And those same people would be picking up the recycling along with, with the trash. So it's, it's not, it would probably take them longer, yes, to do that job, but we're not adding staff to make that happen.
But, and I can tell you, um, because we've done this for so long, summer staff is stressed to the point where they can hardly get done what they need to get done. And to add another, um, to add another duty to their list, um, what won't get done? What won't get done? Something has to give.
Yeah. And I guess, um, monetarily, because we are right now, I guess, talking more about monetary figures. I'm, I'm certainly in favor of, of the fact that I, I think benefits that we've already, benefits not being cut from our employees is more important for me right now than, than, um, pretty much anything recycle related. And again, I'm, I'm recycling. I'm in favor of recycling, and I'd like our program to grow and curbside and all of that stuff. But, um, but as far as, but as far as this year, if we're cutting things, I would rather cut, um, something that's like Cindy's suggestion than, um, than employee benefits. So, um, so if you guys, if Anna can kind of make that, if no one is opposed to that, if you'd like to, if you can, if we can find that, it doesn't sound like it equals out because it was almost, the, the grant match was almost twice as much as what Anna just quoted for the, for the HSA costs, I think. But I don't know what other costs Cindy was talking about because I think you, correct me if I'm wrong, but you said it was close to like $49,000 was in the budget for recycling?
I think $79,000 is in the budget for recycling.
And that was again, an Eagle grant that was, um, for that full amount. And then the match was, as Rich indicated, about, um, it was in between $14,000 and $15,000. I don't remember the exact figure. The discussion we had had last time was that we could, um, if we didn't feel like we were in the financial position to accept that grant, that we could refuse it if we did get it. But, um, you know, certainly we're, you know, if that's, if the direction is to take it out, we'll take it out.
Well, I just think without a comprehensive, um, plan of where we're going with recycling in the city, um, to plug it in the budget, not knowing what it's going to cost us next year because it's, there's going to be a cost associated with it. Are we going to grow it? Now, I know the recycling center said that, um, the bigger bins, if you've got the bigger bins, um, that, um, are part on it. Because you had to partner with somebody, we would haul those bins. Now, we have to look at our budget too. Can we do that every year? Because the biggest part of recycling is hauling the bins. Our hauling costs us the most amount of money. So I guess, I, I guess I don't know enough about the city program because no one's presented us with anything. What exactly is this program? And what does it do? Does it do the buildings? Does it do the parks? Does it just, do we just put out big bins and, and the city puts their things in it? I don't know because we haven't been presented with it. And not knowing that makes it difficult for me to say yes to it because I know next year's budget's going to be affected. And I actually think, um, just watching everything that's going on, that next year's budget is probably going to be a whole lot tighter than this year's. I think this is just the tip of the iceberg. So, um, adding a brand new program, um, in the middle of a crisis, to me, doesn't make good fiscal sense.
Yeah. And we did discuss this, um, recycling program, as you know, um, months ago when the application came up and we were in better, um, you know, financials, in a different situation. So I understand. Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I think we can, like we discussed last, last meeting is whether we accept the grant or not at the time that it's, that it's awarded, if it's awarded. But, um, I guess the main, the main concern right now is, is the fact that it's, that it's in the budget and the HSA contributions aren't.
Yeah.
So would you suggest, for example, that we just take the, the grant out? We, we leave, because the grant application has already been submitted, correct?
Right. And just, and just so you know, um, with, with the budget crisis that the state will have too, I wouldn't be surprised if a lot of that money goes away.
Yeah. Understood. Understood. Um, so Rich, am I correct that the grant application has already been submitted?
Yeah. So we submitted it by the deadline, which was, uh, last month. So it is in process. But we don't expect an answer till sometime in the summer anyway. So.
Okay. So, um, Anna, would your, would you just take it out of the budget? Is that the easiest thing to do?
I can. Um, and then I guess if we do get approved for it, we may put it back in. We can always do that.
Okay.
So if we take out recycling, which is costing us, uh, $14,000, we have to add back in $28,000. So now we're $14,000 over. But Cindy also mentioned, um, taking 1% from administration.
Yeah. Because we don't, if we're going to go into, um, negotiations with the union, we don't know where we're going to end up. And I just think that, um, admin should, I mean, some admin are, are in a step program, and they'll go up this year. If I did my math right, it's a little bit over 8%. Some won't go up hardly any. But admin make the most of all of our employees. So instead of two, I would recommend one, except I know that by contract we have to, um, give two.
So there are four admins that are in the step, um, that are getting steps. Myself, Leland, um, Kathy, and Robbie Edmonds. In my opinion, I feel like we should, yes, we do get paid more. But I feel like we should still be entitled to those because it's just like, um, like union employees that have step raises built into their contracts for the amount of time that they've been there. So that, I mean, like this is my reward for being here another year. I get another step.
Yeah. And I, and I don't, the step program, I have no issue with. I have no issue with the step program. I just think that admin makes so much more than our other employees. That for this year, I think instead of 2%, that 1% is called for. This year, I didn't get a raise. I don't do this to get a raise because I don't make much money. But I just think that sometimes, um, you know, everyone has to, everyone has to give a little. Even on the HSAs, I'm willing to say, okay, maybe everyone doesn't get the $500. Maybe they get $400, um, so that we can balance everything. But I just think that, um, the, the, some people shouldn't bear the brunt of all of this.
Um, if it's the will of the council, I would, um, like to go back with Anna and work on the budget a little bit more using this feedback. And of course, we, we're, I'm planning on bringing it back, um, on the June 1st, um, council for approval. And then maybe we can have, um, work with everyone for some resolution on, on that feedback, um, before June 1st.
I'm very open to that because, you know, we're, we're kind of giving you a couple of things at this meeting that you should have an opportunity to go back. And, you know, I'm very happy that you guys, uh, you know, were able to bring us a balanced budget. I'd still like to move forward with a balanced budget. So it's not fair that we just throw this out to you. And, and I'm speaking only for myself, but, you know, I, I, I am agreeing with, uh, Cindy's recommendations as far as the, and the mayor is, as far as, uh, the, uh, HSA program, uh, and maybe eliminating the budget. But we've got to find another $14,000. I think you should have the opportunity to do that. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And we, we didn't have any, any intention on approving the budget tonight. I think everybody knew that. But so, so I think, um, I think this is good feedback. And if anybody has, you know, any, anything else, um, before they, before they take this, before, um, Rachel and Anna take this back and, and Rich, and kind of go back over it and see what they can do. And go ahead and speak up. And, and even if not, if you're, if you're reviewing it again over the next couple of weeks, then, then, um, make sure that they, you know, that you ask your questions. It's fine to continue to kind of ask questions until we tweak this and get it to where we want it. I, I, I have, go ahead.
Um, so I was just wondering if this is a consensus then among all council members? That this is what, these are the changes that you want?
I really hadn't, to be honest with you, I, I, this was the first that I, that I heard anyone suggest, uh, the lesser, um, increase in wages for admin. So I really hadn't given that a lot of thought. I guess I have maybe more questions about, about who that, that affects. I guess I'm, I'm not, I'm not necessarily in favor of not, um, of the fact that they, that admin may make more. I don't know if it's based that, whether someone gets a, an adequate raise or not based on how much they make. So I'm really not sure if I, if I'm convinced that, that it's a good idea. Plus, I don't know where, where we're at with the, um, with the union negotiations as well. So, um, for me personally, if, um, I have to, I'd have to take a look again at the, at the 2% and who it, what it affects and, and how that's going to work. But so if you can make it, if you can, I, I think the biggest thing here, from what I understand from Cindy, is, is getting the HSA back into the budget. The contributions either, either at what they, or at least, or at least some, some value of HSA contribution. And certainly that it's, that it's more important than the recycle program that we were in. As far as the wages go, if you can make that, if you can make that work or make, make it up some other way, perhaps that would be, perhaps that would be good as well. But I don't know what everybody else thinks. So.
I would just like to see what's the difference? What's the difference if they get 2%? What's the difference if they get 1%? I would just like to see what's the difference? What's the difference if they get two percent? What's the difference if they get one percent?
Yeah, I'm not, give me twenty. Yeah, I'm not opposed. I mean, information, if councilman or mayor Proton needs that information to make sure that she can get a, you know, a vote on that. But if there's other ways, I agree with the mayor and the fact that, you know, let's look for other ways first would be my, my direction. Um, you know, let's, let's see what else is in there that we, maybe we can cut down a little bit and, and see where we can help.
Yeah, this council has, um, I would like to say that with recycling program, I'm considering all the things going on this year and, and that it is new, taking that out of the budget, you know, it's, it's fine with me as well. Um, and, and having HSA funds back, I think is valuable. Um, I would prefer, I guess, to see things applied equitably where maybe if we, so we have fourteen more thousand, if that's all we're trying to go back in, then that could go back to HSA. But I don't necessarily think we should change the plan pay raises for one group of first, one group over another necessarily, at this point. But like I said, we can always look at more information next time, some more numbers maybe.
Well, I think that admin are the easy target because we don't have a contract, so it's easy to take from us. But is it fair, is my question? We're trying to put forth solidarity and, I mean, we're all in this pandemic together. We all feel like we should get the same amount, and that's what we presented in this budget. Not the same amount dollar-wise, but the same percentage. Because that's, that's a fair basis.
Yeah, and I, I understand, Anna, and it's not the first time that this, that a topic similar to this has come up in my eleven years. And, and I certainly don't mean to, um, to attack the admin because they're the easy target without a union. Um, but I, I guess just for, just for informational purposes, if nothing else, um, let's, can you just send, just send up something to, to let us know what, what that difference would be? Um, what is that monetary difference as far as how it affects the budget? Um, not necessarily saying that, it doesn't sound like we all completely agree on, on changing that from two percent to one percent. But I think in, in order to make an informed decision, if you can just let us know what that difference would be and what perhaps your recommendation is in the next couple of weeks to get, um, to get a, um, a pretty good percentage of the HSA back in there. Does that, does that sound rea-, if that sounds reasonable to everyone?
Sounds reasonable to me.
Yep.
Yeah. Is that, is that okay, Anna?
Yeah, um, just off the top of my head, I think one percent um is equal to about fifteen thousand dollars.
So we'll bring some options back to um you prior, for your consideration prior to the next meeting then.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, but let's, let's do that. Okay, so for the public hearing, for the city budget is complete, um. I don't, I guess I'd look to Bill for, um, is that, is that a receipt and file? Um, or, or just an acknowledgement that, that we're done? There's no vote on that? Nothing to vote on?
Normally, normally in this step, we would uh vote on all the different um resolutions and whatnot with the budget. But since we're not voting until the next meeting, I think that's kind of it. But I'll let.
Okay.
So. Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. My understanding was it was not on for a formal vote today. Um, and so now that you've given staff direction about what you want to see, um, they'll bring that back and then obviously there'll be a vote on June first.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, next up is report officers. We have the neighborhood enterprise zone application from Thunder Bay Properties. Anna was going to cover that.
Yep. Okay, um, so on May fifth, Trent Sherman with Thunder Bay Properties submitted an application for an enterprise, neighborhood enterprise zone certificate. This is for property located at one twenty-one to one twenty-three North Second Avenue. It is located within the downtown neighborhood enterprise zone, which was established on October sixth, two thousand three. Um, he is planning on taking abandoned office space and converting the space into residential living space. Um, he is asking for a twelve-year tax exemption. I did, um, I, I sent this to Alan Berg, the assessor, and he signed off on it. I also sent it to um Don Gilment, the building official, and, and he approved it. So I went ahead and did the resolution. Um, so if there aren't any questions on that, then I would need approval, resolution twenty twenty dash oh five. And once um approved, I will submit this through the state tax commission for their final approval. And then, once they give it, then they send us the certificate.
Uh, this is Don, the building official?
Yep. I do, I have one question. And, um, so I approve the fact that every, everything that my signature goes for is that it's going to bring it up to current codes and all that. But I see on there now that their, the abatement they're asking for is twelve years.
Yep.
And Adam, I don't know, you know, Adam's gone, but it used to be that there was a scoring chart. I know Cindy's on that council and the fellow from the library. And generally, we would sit down and go over that scoring chart, which had a plethora of information on it that council wanted it scored by. And determine how many years you would get. And I, I was not involved in that process. So I'm just asking if maybe Adam did it with Cindy and Paul or something, or if it just hadn't been done and they just asked for twelve years.
Yeah, I, I think twelve years is the highest you can get, but there was no needing to um score.
Okay, because that was my main uh question as well, because normally, normally when Adam had brought these to us before, he would tell us, yes, that it went through the scoring process. Um, so if it, and it doesn't sound like this went through the scoring process at all. Um, without a city planner, I'm not sure who heads, who would head that up. But, um, but I don't think that we would be prepared to, to approve this for twelve years if it didn't go through the scoring process.
Could, could I just maybe suggest, Mr. Mayor, could I suggest that I could take care of that on, with Councilman Johnson's help? We can probably with, before the next council meeting, have that committee meeting and go through the sc- uh scoring criteria. And then bring, and it very well may be that it qualifies for twelve points under the guidelines. But at least we'll know for sure, and that we will have some consistency with these NEZs.
Yeah, and Paul Sabrin is usually on that committee as well, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, I apologize. I didn't know that there was a scoring um process for this. So I received it. I did what I thought I was supposed to do and I submitted, but I didn't realize that. So I'll know for next time.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, and I didn't, I didn't know what he had submitted because he called me probably a couple of days before he gave it to Anna. And he said, hey, and I said, well, make sure you submit your NEZ. But he did tell me they're not looking to start until sometime in August. So it shouldn't slow anything down for anybody.
Yeah, I think with the transition, it's something that fell through the cracks, so we'll resolve that and get it back to you on June first.
Okay, uh, my only question is Councilman Noak, my only counsel, my only question on that is that committee, I believe, was made, made up of people that were appointed. I'm not sure what the alternate would be. So I'm not sure if we can just appoint Don to that, um.
I was on it.
Don was on the committee.
Don was? Okay.
I'm on it, yeah.
Okay, all right. I just want to be sure that we're making sure, since we don't have a city planner, somebody should step into that position too. I'm assuming Rachel, that would be yourself.
I'm doing the best I can.
We're all learning. Yes.
Yes, you are. And you've done an awesome job.
Life without planner.
Yeah, not, not a problem. Then let's, um, let's table that item until, uh, until the next meeting. Uh, assuming that you can get it done before the Ju-, before the June meeting.
Mayor Proton Johnson, I move that we table the NEZ um application till our next meeting.
Councilman Noak second.
Uh, Hess? Or I'm sorry, Johnson? We'll start with Johnson.
Uh, Johnson, yes.
Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Noak?
Noak, yes.
Walagora?
Walagora, hi.
And Hess?
Hess, yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. Uh, next up, unfinished business. This is the water and sewer rate recommendation.
Uh, Rich Solinger, city engineer. Pursuant to the May fourth, twenty twenty city council meeting and the questions arising regarding the proposed rate increase, I prepared this memorandum with a lower overall rate increase for council's review. The question rose whether the proposed ten percent increase was viable or if it should be lowered to a five percent increase. The original memorandum prepared and presented at the May fourth, twenty twenty city council meeting recommended a ten percent overall increase in water sewer rates. The rates proposed were six dollars and eighty-three cents per thousand for water and six dollars and ninety-three cents per thousand for sewer. It was anticipated that this would generate, with Alpena Township paying the rate they are currently paying, one million, six hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars for infrastructure investment. If city council opted for a five percent increase, the rates would be six dollars and fifty-two cents per thousand gallons for water and six dollars and sixty-two cents per thousand gallons for sewer. It is anticipated that this would generate, with Alpena, Alpena Township paying the rate they are currently paying, one million, five hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars. For twenty twenty-one fiscal year, we, we did program a very aggressive water and sewer infrastructure program. Um, we knew we were going to be drawing on fund balance uh to be able to accomplish that. So we, we programmed one million, eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred dollars for sewer improvements and one million, eight hundred and seventeen thousand in water improvements totaling three point six nine three million. With a five percent, um, with a five percent reduced increase, the city will be drawing two million, one hundred, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, I screwed up that number, two million, one hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and nineteen thousand. Too many digits in there uh from the utilities fund balance. Even with the ten percent increase, uh, the city was going to draw from fund balance. You know, if, if, recognizing the economic times that we're in and um the situation with, with uh revenues, um, it's not unrealistic to look at the five percent increase. Um, if we, if we need to, we, like I said, we do have a very aggressive water and sewer infrastructure program, program for next year. We could easily reduce that. Uh, and we may be forced to by availability of contractors. Um, so we, we do have that ability to reduce that expenditure. So, and the last paragraph in my, in my sentence, because I, I know when we, we all, not all of us that are on the council now, but at the time, when we face such a hard increase, a, a large increase to our customers, it was because in the past, we had, and the term used was kick the can down the road uh by not increasing rates as we were supposed to. So i- if we do drop back, which I understand, and um, you know, we could certainly live with as far as from a utility basis, uh, it's just going to delay, it's going to delay that inevitable. You know, there's, there's going to be rate increases in the future. Um, and we may have to make up for some of this reduced increase this year. Is the only thing I'm cautioning in that last paragraph.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Rich. Um, I certainly appreciate all the work that you put into this and, and at the engineering department. I, I just, um, and I, it seemed, it seemed as though we were all kind of um a little bit set back with a, with a ten percent hike. I guess from my perspective, um, I couldn't, I couldn't um be part of imposing a ten percent increase on our water and sewer rates this year. Um, I get it. I understand that we need to, that we need to bring our revenue up to meet uh what we were told several years ago, uh, many years ago now, uh, for our infrastructure. I, I just don't feel like this is the year for something, for one that's that big. Uh, so I am more in favor of uh, of the five percent increase that's outlined on this memo. And um, I, I, I look for everyone else's uh opinion as well, so we can kind of move on. Danny?
Yes, I, I do agree with the, uh, the five percent. And I, I, when I talked to Rachel earlier today, was whether there was a possibility of reducing some of the capital improvements, at least for this year, to do that. Um, again, with the businesses and uh people not uh earning as much as they did, the, the, doing this kind of an increase would be a shock to the system. Um, one question I, I didn't ask her was, uh, has it been done in the past? Can it be done in the future for public input to this, like we would do other open meetings, whether it has to do with the budget or anything else like this, that the public at least has their input when it comes to any kind of a rate increase? That way, at least they have a voice to go before council and before the uh utility. So, uh, that's, that's what I hope we could possibly look at in the future, is some sort of a public hearing on this kind of a rate increases. Other than that, I'm all for the five percent.
If, if I could comment on that, um, back, back when we, when we implemented that increase and the recommendation that came out, you know, following the recommendation from Gosling Zubek. Um, and we amended our rate, rate methodology and how we were calculating the rates. We presented it. That's why we did this in conjunction with the budget, so that the rates would be presented at the same time as the, as the budget. And basically, that would give the public the opportunity to voice their concern because it was part of the budget process. Prior to that, we just incorporated the rate increases into the budget and it was all one fell swoop. But as far as being approved, uh, in this way, we are bringing, presenting them as a completely separate portion of the budget, and it does give the public that time to uh, to voice their concern.
Would that be identified then during our public hearing time uh for the budget itself? Uh, and um, it made uh known to the public that there's also going to be a discussion concerning uh, uh, rate increases for the water sewer departments like this. Um, I mean, what we were doing a public hearing.
Let me, let me just. Yeah, let me, let me butt in just briefly, just so we're not discussing this for, for an incredible amount of time. Um, we, just as Rich mentioned, we, we separate these two. Um, we, we always, just as this year, we always make sure that it goes and overlaps several meetings before we make a decision. And so the media covered it. I thought they covered it quite well. So it's been, it was been basically broadcast to the community what was proposed to us a couple of weeks ago by Rich, and then we discuss it again tonight. And then we're going to discuss it and vote on it at our next meeting. So that's three meetings, whether we need to actually have a public hearing. If that makes, I really don't see that that makes that much of a difference. The public always, always has an opportunity to, to comment on anything that we talk about um at our meetings, and this certainly is on the agenda. It's been in the media. Um, and so I, I really don't think it's necessary to, to hold a public comment or a public hearing, so to speak. But if you'd like to, then it was definitely something that we'd have to do next year. Um, because this year, we, we're only going to card one more time and it's basically going to be at our next meeting in June when we approve the budget, because it is part of the budget. So, so, I mean, we can entertain that.
Could we discuss that next year for that part, just so we make sure that these things are in fact publicized to the public? That if you wish to make comments on the rate increases, as well as anything to do with the um annual budget itself, you know, uh, sometimes they don't see all the nuances out there of, of what's going on.
That's fine. That's, that's fine with me. If, um, perhaps Anna can make a note, uh, if she's got that type of tickler system where she can make a note. I, I, I don't have an issue withholding a public hearing. I just don't see that most of them aren't advert. she can make a note. I, I don't have an issue with holding a public hearing. I just don't see that most of them aren't advertised any more than our regular meetings are, but that's just me. I don't think it's an issue. So if we want to, if we want to hold it, what does that entail? An extra $200 ad in the newspaper? Or can it just be attached to the, we can just attach it to the public hearing for the
That's, that's what I was talking about. At the same time you're doing the budget, you would say if you have any questions concerning the any rate increases to the water or something like this, that it'd be happening at the same public hearing or whatever.
Yeah, that's fine. It would basically just say something like public hearing for the budget and water and sewer rates. That's
That'd be fine.
All right. Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Amber? Amber Hess?
Yes, I'm. I think that the 5% increase just definitely sits better with me than the 10%. And I feel we do have a need and a duty to, to be able to maintain and keep our systems up so that they can be improved and stay working. Otherwise, you end up with bigger repair problems and that costs more in the long run. So I'm comfortable with the 5%. For those reasons, we do need to make changes, but this year, like I said, we know that a lot of people are struggling financially due to this situation going on. So I think the 5% works for me.
Okay, Mike Noack.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the comments I have is obviously the 5% is a little bit more palatable. I think if I'm going through the books and looking at everything right, Rich, operationally, it looks like we were right around 3.25% or 3.5% operational increases that I've seen from what Mike was telling us of the cost of the chemicals and the cost of the so about a percent and a half going toward the capital if I'm not, if I'm figuring it correctly. I would say this, though, if I recall to Rich's point in the past, when it was like we were kicking the can down the road, there was a long time that, you know, that no increases were happening at all, operational cost or anything else. And being part of the council that originally had to go through the original increases, we talked at that time that operationally, we definitely wanted to keep on too, but you know, as far as the capital, we were going to get to a point and just say, you know, we were going to work off that budget as best we could. I don't believe our goal was at that time is to keep increasing to get ourselves to the 3.6 per year. But more palatable would have been about 75% of that, about 2.6, 2.8, somewhere in that area, as I recall. And again, that was a lot of years ago when I was sitting on this council. So I would say that, you know, I'm okay with the 5%, but I would also like to see a note for next year that operational increases be separated out from capital increases. I'd like to understand that a little bit more, just to understand exactly what our increases are costing operationally. If a 3.5% increase is warranted for that, and we feel we need to do more for, for capital because we've got prioritized, high-value projects that we need to get done, we need to understand that rather than, you know, we've got a lot of projects out there right now, but as Rich explained to us earlier, some of those projects can be delayed a little bit. So I think, you know, having a priority list would make it a little bit more understanding as well. For this year, while I'm not happy about it, I could, I could live with the 5%. I think it's going to be palatable for the time. But those are a few changes I'd like to see going on in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. Thanks, Mike. Cindy?
Johnson here. I agree with everything that everyone has said, including Mike, being part of the group that started raising rates to get us where we needed to be, to have a system that functions well. Hasn't been easy. I know it's not easy for the residents to understand why we need to do it, but we do need to do it. I do like Mike's suggestion if we can point out to everybody our needs and our wants and kind of separate them out, not that there's any wants in there, but prioritize so that people can understand too, when we ask for the rate increases, why, why we're asking. If it's an increase because of costs that we have to cover, that's what we have to do. If it's an increase because we have projects that have to get done, then maybe, maybe people can understand it a little better than just a a broad increase. I would like to thank Rich and staff for all the hard work that they put in this. I know that you know, it's not easy to know what you need and then get what, what we give you, but I agree with the 5% this year.
All right. Thank you, council. And for Anna and Rich, that looks like where we're at. Looks like everybody's in agreement with that and perhaps, I don't know, Rich might even be able to put, to put something, something together. Just, just to put, just so our residents do know, I guess, even what our major projects are and where those costs are going. Maybe just a little bit of detail would be fine, because I don't know, it sounded like Noack wanted it, you know, for the future, but if you can put something like that together even for this year, just so people can understand where that's going and where the shortfall is going to be. I think that seems reasonable if you have time.
Yeah, we, as part of the calculations, I look at the operational expenses and what the increases are in those. And as far as the capital needs, those, those projects, major projects, not down to the $5,000 level, but the major projects are all outlined in the budget narratives, all the water and sewer funds. So those do exist.
Right.
One other question, if I may, Mr. Mayor. One thing too, Rich, that I, I've looked into a little bit is that on our averages right now, we currently are averaging out every three years. But I'm finding that some of the utilities that do something similar to this, and again, it's not exact, have used a five-year calculation. Is there a reason that we only use three years to kind of balance out those costs? You, you mentioned in our last meeting that those costs were balanced out over a three-year period, so things would not go up and down, kind of a spiking sensation. But I'm finding a little bit more common use, five years. Can you give us an idea of how that would look, or is that just going to be, you know, a little bit too far a stretch?
No. Yeah, we've got, I've got this going back to when we started this implementation strategy. I have all those numbers in there and we can, it's just a matter of reformatting what I use for averages for the current year. So I can certainly do that.
All right. Thank you. All right. That finishes up that one for the evening. So next up is the July, the July 2020 fireworks contract. Chief Forbush, did you have something for that?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Currently, contributions at the Chamber of Commerce are at $14,000, counting a $2,000 donation that came in today. Lafarge Corporation is matching all contributions, so that's why it's 14 instead of 12. The fireworks contractor, Wolverine Fireworks Display Company, I talked to Jenny Campo there. She says that postponing it until later in the summer, perhaps Labor Day was brought up, I believe by Councilman Hess. And she says that is a possibility, didn't lock in, but it was possible. And a show is doable with the money that we have now, if it's permitted by the state's safety regulations at that time. And so at this point, it isn't really a matter of money, it's just a matter of whether we're allowed to.
Okay, so when you, when you said that the chamber has 14,000, that, that did not include the $12,000 maximum match from Lafarge, is that what you're saying?
I wasn't aware of the 12,000 maximum, but Adam told me late this afternoon that with the 2,000, that would bring it to 4,000, 14,000 total. I'm not sure the detail on that.
The way that I understand it is that there have been $7,000 in donations, and then he's already adding in Lafarge's match and bringing it up to 14,000.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, you know, that's important to know. So I guess at this point, the chamber has $7,000 since, well, since zero. So they have $7,000, not counting the, the match, and the match would bring it to 14. So we're not, we're not quite.
I think their bracelet fundraiser did somewhere around 2,400, and then in the GoFundMe, they've got over 2,000 in there, and then like Bill had mentioned, there was another donation today, and I think it was 2,000 something. So it all adds up to 7,000. That's how he's coming up at the 14,000.
Okay, so, so we're probably, we're looking at the fact that we're probably about halfway. Probably about halfway.
Or we could do a smaller show.
The chamber needs a Yeah, yeah. So, but as far as the goal, probably need to raise another 7,000. So there's, there's 14, and then the maximum by the chamber would, or by the Lafarge would make it 26. So, so we're really, really close. I mean, there's another 10 days to raise probably less than $7,000, if my math is right.
At this point, the biggest challenge will be when to have the show and, and when the rules will lighten up a little bit, and nobody knows that. So it's, it's anyone's best guess.
Right, right. And that's understandable. Right now, I really, I guess I really don't want to discuss too much because we don't know what to discuss right, right now, as far as I'm concerned. I think the rest of the council, correct me if I'm wrong, but the goal here is to have a Fourth of July fireworks display. And that's, so that's the goal right now, and there's really not, not too much sense in discussing when we might have it, not knowing now whether we'll be able to have it then or not. So unless someone disagrees, I think we should just continue on with that. There, there, anyone?
This is Councilman Mitchell. I was just going to say that if anyone hasn't already contributed from the council or the public like this, I encourage you to do so. Ever since, I did not have to buy $700 worth of Google Play gift cards. I went ahead and sent the chamber some funds. I told them to keep their bracelets for, for other peoples like this. So hopefully, we'll see more people donating it in. Like you said, we have 10 days left to go. So, thank you.
Mayor, this is Bill Piper. Yeah. Can I ask a question to Chief Forbush? Absolutely. Okay. Bill, I thought that when you presented last meeting, you indicated that the fireworks company needed to know by June 1st whether we were going to put on a show or not. And they were willing to allow us to extend into next year if we needed to. But I thought they needed a commitment from the city by June 1st to make sure that they could commit their company to doing this. Is that accurate?
That is correct. We need a commitment by June 1st for the July 4th date. But then Councilman Hess asked, what if we couldn't do July 4th, could we do something later? I asked that and they said that was a possibility, but we don't know any more than that.
I do think, this is Rachel Smolinski, I do think that we need to come up with a plan for making that decision prior to June 1st because I'm not sure that they would like to know at, you know, 8 o'clock that night, on June 1st, whether or not we're going to have a show. So if there could be some discussion regarding that, I mean, we could do a special meeting, you know, with just this one subject on May 29th, or whatever other options you're thinking.
Could we do a motion?
Yeah, I guess what I would Well, there's, yeah, like I was going to say, and it's, Bill Piper can give his opinion, I guess. The two options that I see is we could make a contingent motion based on, based on allowing the signing of the contract on the 28th. If the funds are raised, or we can have the chamber alert me when, when and if the funds are raised between now and then, and then we could just call a special meeting with that one thing on, on the agenda. Basically signing the contract. So Bill, I don't know if we can do a contingent type. It's not something we do very often or ever.
Yeah, we can, and I think that makes sense, because I think in fairness to the, to the fireworks company, I mean, they, they need to know for sure, I think, by June 1st whether we're going to do this or not. Because obviously, they, you know, they have to plan their summer and, and where they're going to be and what fireworks they're going to do. And so in fairness to them, I would hate to see them miss out on the potential of doing another community on July 4th. Because they're waiting around to do ours, and then we say we can't do it. So I just think, you know, as a matter of professionalism with them, we need to let them know by June 1st for sure whether we're planning on doing it or not. And I know we're all subject to, you know, maybe the state says you can't do it. That's, that's a separate issue, but we also have to raise sufficient funds between now and then to commit to them to do it because the city has not put money in, and it was not the intent that the city would put money in to help get to that goal.
Is Councilwoman Hess here?
No, and the city will not. Hi, Amber.
Yeah, hi. Well, I want to say, I want to say the fundraiser has only been going about a week, and, and so it's encouraging to see how much has been raised, and with Lafarge's match, we're already well over half of the goal budget, and they're having another fundraiser bracelet sale this week and are still taking online donations. And as Chief Forbush had said, we, they would be open to pair back if necessary. So I think maybe we could have a contingent that on the 29th, 28th or 29th of May, whatever funds we have, we could sign the contract for that amount of money. Maybe we have $25,000 raised this year. But if Lafarge is going to match and we have the opportunity, I think it'd be great to go ahead if we're allowed for the Fourth, wonderful, but if we're not, then maybe setting a future date when we're allowed to by the state.
Okay, so, so what I want to, what I want to entertain is a, is a motion to, to allow Chief Forbush to to sign the contract with Wolverine in the event that, that the funds are raised anytime between now and the deadline. The, the only question that I have would be if if we're going to allow for a show that's less, okay, how, how, how much less? You know, do we how, how is Chief Forbush going to know, you know, on the 28th, how is he going to know that what they raised, if it's not the goal, which is $23,000? How is he going to determine if it's 19, if we think that that's enough? That's my only question. We don't meet again on the 28th and, and know exactly how much we have to deal with. How is Chief going to make that decision?
He's going to call the mayor.
Mayor, just to let you know, I was the one that made the recommendation of the May 28th deadline to the chamber because that would be a cutoff for donations, and then we could assess it and then make a recommendation to council for the June 1st meeting. And I did speak to Bill Forbush, and he said that he thought it would be okay to still make a recommend, or ask the fireworks company if we could, let them know on June 1st if that would be okay, and he thought it would be. So that's
Well, it's still going to be we're talking about June 1st, and like Rachel said, it's going to be, it's going to be 8 o'clock at night on June 1st.
Yeah.
You know, we did discuss that with the company. They're amenable to it. They really want to do the job if they can.
So they're okay with knowing on, on, at 8 o'clock at night on the June 1st?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then let's, then we, then I guess we don't need a contingent. We don't need anything. We'll just table this until, till the meeting on June 1st then. Sound good? Does that sound reasonable? Is that okay, Chief?
Absolutely. It's amazing how the, the public has come forward in this.
Absolutely. It's amazing how the, the public has come forward in this small amount of time. Uh, I really hope that it, that it can happen and it's obviously very important to people. I'm not sure at this point whether it can or not, but, uh, it won't be for lack of funding.
Okay, all right. That sounds good and, and I guess if it means anything, we're not, we're not the, the only community that has announced that we have plans for, for Fourth of July fireworks show. So we're not hanging out there all by ourselves. So let's just find out what happens, uh, fundraising wise between now and the, and the first and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't, I don't know that we need to even, that we're tabling it, but, um, you wanna just put it back on the, put it back on the agenda because we'll just, we'll treat that as an update. How's that?
I can do that.
Um, next up is new business, uh, medical marijuana facility application scoring rubric. And we all have a copy of that in our packet here. Uh, Rachel, I think, were you gonna kick that off?
Since I'm playing the role of the planner and apparently not well, but, um, so I went back to, um, the March sixteenth meeting where everyone had discussed the, um, selection criteria and that was based upon the, um, Iron Mountain example. So I, um, reformatted this and made the, um, appropriate changes. And, and again, that's just what we had, um, as of the March sixteenth meeting. Um, there may have been some things that, um, you know, you want to change since then. Um, I know there were, um, specifically changes under, um, section one qualification of applicant. Um, I had put in, um, for owning under their fifty-one percent or more, um, ownership and then we, um, did change the scoring a bit in that section, um, changed, I believe it was the, um, minimum of, of two years prior to the application or there was one of them that I switched from, um, one to two. I, I'm sorry, I think it was the, um, third one down applicant demonstrates experience with owning fifty-one percent or more, um, and that was the inventory tracking and control. I changed that from two to one. And then, um, the next one down, I changed that from a one to a two, which was indicated in the March sixteenth meeting. Um. And then going down to, I think the next major, um, well, Bill and I had a discussion, Bill Piper and I had a discussion regarding the co-location aspect. Which I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead a little bit. That is in section, um, three B on page three, under economic impact. And, and so at the March sixteenth meeting, um, you had wanted it kept in, but I know that, um, Bill and I again had had a discussion regarding whether or not that was, um, something you still wanted and, um, whether or not that gave an unfair advantage to, um, certain applicants. Um, Bill, did you have any further thoughts on that?
Yeah, we discussed that, but here, here was my thought, just so we're on the same wavelength. This, uh, this scores points for the applicant simply proposing to locate, um, uh, more than one facility on that property or at other properties. And so what my concern was is, uh, that would allow somebody to present an application that says, I'm gonna open a provisioning center, a grow and a transportation facility and get the extra five points. And then, once the license comes through, say, no, I'm just gonna open the grow, I'm just gonna open the provisioning center. I gotta scale back the grow operation and the, and the transport operation and in a sense, that extra five points might put them up into the one or two automatically and then they're, and they're really not doing that because this doesn't require them to do it. It just says they get, they get points if they propose to do that. But we can't make them open it up. I mean, once we give them, once we give them the license, you, you can, we can't say you can't, you've got to open all three facilities. So just thought it might give an unfair advantage to applicants by proposing, uh, you know, having three, three facilities when they really were gonna only open one. And once again, it kind of falls to the top of the list because five points is a good chunk of points, uh, and that would probably separate, uh, them from other applicants.
Okay. So I guess I would, um, I, I can go through the other changes or did you want to discuss co-location?
Yeah, let's do one at a time just so we don't, because we're not in the same room. It might make it difficult. Um, I, I, I agree. I, I don't have an issue with taking that out of there because like Bill says, is the proposal. Um, I, I'm fine with that. Anybody not? Okay.
This is Hess here. I, I am fine with taking it out for that reason because it, even if they're just proposing and they don't do it, but also for the reason that it gives a really large number of points to just someone who maybe has more financial capability and that doesn't necessarily mean that they would be the best person. So. All right, I can take it out? Okay, um, the other. Is everyone ready for me to move on?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, the other major thing is I took out, um, from the original Iron Mountain application is that I took out the section, um, six, which was the status of the State of Michigan licensure because that's covered in our ordinance. Um, it's not, it's not in your new rubric, but I just wanted to, you to be aware that that entire section is gone, um, based upon, um, earlier recommendations. And then my apologies, but I skipped over, um, on page two, under two B, the security plan. Um, out of the original application, I did take out the, um, reference to, um, the CAT-Eye program because that was pretty specific and, um, you had asked for further clarification on it, um, at the March sixteenth meeting, but, um, Bill and I looked it up and it was something related to Flint, I believe.
Yeah, the CAT-Eye program was a specific program that initially started in Flint and it was a, it was a partnership between, uh, businesses and the Flint Police Department and I believe they received some federal monies for that. And it did give the twenty-four hour real-time surveillance directly to the police station. For those particular businesses, those businesses were lo- located in high crime areas and they were businesses that had been targeted in the past. So they were, they were trying to allow those businesses to remain open, but also give them security that, uh, you know, the, the police presence would be there twenty-four seven. And we had that, uh, in the, um, ordinance, uh, as well. And I think during the discussion about that, uh, we just thought that that twenty-four hour real-time monitoring directly to the police station was kind of an overreach. Uh, and, uh, also that program, that, that CAT-Eye program that developed, uh, you know, was based on monies being available to the business owner to put that type of, uh, system in. So since we took it out of the ordinance, uh, we didn't think that, uh, it should stay in the rubric for scoring points for, uh, ranking of applications. So that's why, uh, uh, we made an executive decision to take that out. Obviously if council wants that back in, we could put that back in, but if it's not in the ordinance, it didn't make sense to have it in the rubric.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense to me. To be honest with you, um, two B, the, the whole security plan, uh, I honestly don't see anything in there that any applicant isn't gonna score every single point. Um, just based on some of, some of that stuff is a, is a, is a requirement and some of it, um, some of it could, i- is nothing more than a lock on the front door, which I'm sure all of them are gonna have a lock on the front door, um, to deter or prevent unauthorized entrance into the facility. Because you're, i- if we're not, if we're not like more specific, um, then a simple lock on the front door is gonna give them a point on number one where somebody, you know, one facility might have, um, have a different setup, but I, but I, but I, and I don't know that much about, um, what the State of Michigan requires, um, but the ones that I've been in have a, have a two-door system where you can, you can basically come in out of the rain, uh, but you can't enter the store any further than that front lobby without, um, identifying yourself and then someone has to buzz you in. So, you know, a lot of these things that, uh, on this are, are kind of vague. Um, presents a plan to prevent theft and diversion, um, presents a plan to, to, for secure storage of marijuana and, and proceeds. I think some of that stuff is, is pretty vague, but I think a lot of it is required by the state anyhow. Um, so I, I don't know if, I, I don't know if it, i- if it presents us with wanting to, wanting to, you know, break them down a little bit more or if it's, or if, or if we should just leave it in there and, and, and figure that everybody's gonna get every point except for maybe perhaps the last one. Some kind of alert system for the owner to know that someone's tampering with the facility. Um, but other than that, I mean, i- i- it's fine. I'm just kind of, kind of giving my opinion on that whole section just seems kind of borderline irrelevant, um, as far as points go, except for maybe the, the last, the, the last, last one. But they do get two points, I guess. So I don't know if anybody got big thoughts about that or not. I guess we can just leave it. That's fine. That's fine. We'll just leave it.
Okay. All right, and, and that, those were the major changes that, that I had, um, noted to the Iron Mountain, um, rubric. So I can, um, unless there are any other changes, I can, um, change this or make those modifications and bring it back, um, to the June first meeting.
Yeah, that, that sounds reasonable to me. Uh, Bill, were you about to say something or no?
I was just gonna say that the, uh, the second reading of the ordinance, uh, will be on for the first and then this is part of that ordinance. So we wanted to, we wanted to have the rubric, um, uh, we didn't want to get things on the first that council wanted to change and then set us back another meeting. So, uh, essentially since you've just taken three B out, we should be good to go on June first.
Okay, and, um, I'm wondering if, uh, I guess this, my question would be for Rachel, but perhaps you might have to check with IT or something. Can we, can we put, um, the, the, and once it's finalized, or supposedly finalized, at least the proposed ordinance, proposed rubric and the current proposed map on the face of the, of our website rather than, I, I mean, I know that somebody could find it in our packet, um, but can we put those on the very welcome front page of our, um, of our website for the next couple of weeks? Because I, I'd, I'd like to make sure that we're getting, um, as much input from, from, from the industry as possible.
Sure.
Uh, vote on this in our next meeting.
Um, and I think that w- we have a, um, another version of the ordinance, I, I'm sorry, an updated version of the ordinance. So it shouldn't take us too long to get that package together. Would you agree, Bill?
I agree. The only, the only thing I was gonna say is I'm not sure if, if Don wants to, uh, uh, join in here at all, but we, we also have to still amend the zoning ordinance for the other facilities so that, uh, people can know where those can go.
Yeah, I'll jump in. That's, that's absolutely correct. That'll be ready to go at the next meeting. Um, I was able to look through some of the planning commission files and see what, uh, had been passed already by the planning commission and, and, uh, had been sent to council over the time. And I've looked at it to make sure that it jives with the code of ordinances that we're passing right now. Um, and then one other thing, just to, to throw, throw it out there. I would imagine that once we get these ordinance passed, those two licenses, I mean, the people are gonna jump on them. They're gonna, they're gonna wanna, wanna get going. And I, I talked with one, uh, individual today that's got a site, wanted to make sure it would, uh, meet the criteria. I'm, and I assured him that I've, you know, with the way we were moving forward, it looked like it would. Um, but you know, a lot of times we pass these ordinances and then we say, you know, goes into effect fifteen days after pub, being published in the paper. And I might just suggest for you guys to consider, and girls, that we make it thirty or forty-five days after it's passed to give us time to bring the new planner on board. Um, because you know, we're gonna go through this once and then we're gonna have, you know, if we did it in fifteen days, we might be knee-deep in the process by the time that, that person, him or her gets on board. And you know, there's gonna be a, another, a retraining cycle. So I just, you know, I think it would be a little, uh, more seamless if we had enough time. You know, we, we need to get the forms prepared, all, all the other stuff that goes with it.
I think forty-five days would be reasonable given, um, our timeline on, um, you know, getting someone in here to fill that position, um, as much as I love it, um, it, it would, it would be, um, helpful.
I, I certainly agree with both of those comments.
Um, I guess for May, uh, forty-five days, forty-five days from June first is, is like, um, mid.
Mid-August.
Mid-August.
Mid-July.
It's mid-July.
Yep.
Mid-July, mid, mid-July, right? So, um. I mean, I, I understand. We don't, you know, we don't have a planner right now, um, but. Uh, forty-five days is a long time. Um, it's something that we've been working on for, it seems like three years, but, um, you know, the, it.
No, I mean.
I don't know, I don't know.
My opinion is, is like, you know, I'd rather see us get it right than, than get it quick. You know, I want it right. I want somebody new that's coming into it to, you know, be able to be fully up to speed. So I kind of am in agreement with both Bill and, and, uh, Don's comments on that. I don't have a problem. I think that, you know, it, it's forty-five days, but you know, we, we can't remember what happened forty-five days ago. I mean, because that, that goes by pretty quick. So I don't, I don't really have a problem with that at all. We have been working on it a long time and we are able, but you know, if, if we need to do it right for forty-five days and bring them up to speed, I think that's fine.
But what is it, what is it that, that, that the new planner is going to be doing? Um, what's, what's gonna take forty-five days? I guess it's, make me feel better about, about why, why we have to wait such a significant amount of time.
Um, I think we still need to get the, um, full application together as well. Um, that's, and we also need to run the, um, the zoning through, the zoning changes through the planning commission. Is that correct, Don?
Uh, no, that's, that's already been done. We, we just need to have the council, uh, in the, at the next meeting, approve those changes, which I'm sure it's, it's not gonna be an issue. No, but it's the application, um, where, where a person's shy in City Hall administrative-wise. Um, I'm retiring. I've got a lot of vacations saved up. That being said, it's not a question of whether or not Rachel and I, and I can handle this. And with, like, Mike Kelchewski would help, of course, with whatever, whatever applications we get. Because remember, it's not just two medical facilities that'll be approved. Everything in the way of medical is approved. Growing, transporting, we have that, that's gonna be set in all the zoning districts. So once that happens, wha- whatever that means to the industry, they're, they're gonna start applying. And, uh, no, we certainly can do it. That's, uh, thirty to forty-five days actually came out of some conversations I had with, uh, Adam Paul and our former city manager Greg Sundon, because they were more involved in this over the last three years than I was. But whatever council decides is what we'll do. We'll soldier on.
I, I, this is Hess. I'd like to add that forty-five days to go into effect after it's passed does seem very long to me because we're also gonna be taking applications for forty-five days before we close those applications.
because we're also gonna be taking applications for forty-five days before we close those applications, is my understanding. So that's ninety days we're out, and if people are looking at possibly building or renovating facilities, if you're getting into fall and winter, and so you're really, so I think the weeks do matter, so if it's usually ten days, maybe we could do twenty or thirty days, but, but waiting those extra few weeks really could be valuable to businesses that want to get going.
Understood.
Yeah, I guess, um, let's, let's forge forward, I guess, with um, with getting everything, getting everything that we can get on the next agenda. Um, and understanding that I, I don't wanna pass, I don't wanna pass anything on June first if we're not, if we're not ready. Because that's just gonna be, in my opinion, it's gonna be way too confusing for the, so at our next meeting, let's say we tentatively, we vote on and pass the ordinance, we vote on and pass the rubric, we vote on and pass the, the new zoning, and so that's gonna be publicized in the media, and do you think that somebody's gonna be expected to read far enough into a report, or, or, you know, not, I'm not saying, suggesting that people don't read, but now all of a sudden, we've passed all this stuff, and, and then at the bottom, it's gonna say, "But, you can't apply for another forty-five days." So, I, I don't, you know, I don't know. Do we, do we wait? Do we wait just to, just to approve all this stuff until, until we're ready, until we have the forms that are ready, and we have a planner that understands what we're doing? Do we just wait until then to even, to even approve this stuff? I guess, I, I don't know. I'm not sure what the best way to do this is, 'cause I'm, I'm just mildly frustrated that it's taking so long.
Well, well, Mr. Mayor, one thing we'll have to do as well, from the time this gets passed, is get the language in. You know, we'll have to update the code of ordinances. I don't know exactly how long that takes to get that updated online. We'll have to update the zoning ordinance, and it's not huge. It's a lot of text, but it's just text that has to be in a lot of different areas of that book, so that if somebody does go online to look at that stuff, it's there. And so, you know, I, I don't know exactly how long that takes, to be honest with you, because that's, that hasn't been my department before. Greg and I, we rewrote the entire zoning ordinance in twenty-ten, and that was that. But uh, as far as these tax amendments, we need, we need to get those online, because I can tell you, if you remember back in twenty-eighteen, we updated our signed zoning ordinance. I, I think everybody on council, that was on council then, remembers that. I can absolutely guarantee you, because I just did it today, if you go in and look at our zoning ordinance, you're not gonna see any of the new changes that we made two years ago, um, to be compliant with the Supreme Court. Mike and I just had a conversation about that, so there's, there's just a lot of pieces. Um, I guess I wasn't aware of the fact that i- if it goes into effect within forty-five day, you know, forty-five days after adoption, or thirty days, that we wouldn't even be able to entertain any applications before then. I just thought we would have that time before people started expecting to have applications approved. So, I mean, again, you know, whatever council uh, decides, it'll be fine with me, and it'll, it'll be fine with the manager. I'm just trying to think of the, the, the long game in the short term.
Mayor Walagora, the, the, the proposed ordinance that'll be voted on June first will be effective ten days after publication. So if it gets published on June second or third, it's gonna be effective June twelfth or thirteenth. Uh, and there is uh, language that we're gonna take applications for forty-five days. Uh, so, that's gonna put us uh, towards the end of July, in any event. So, uh, if, if council uh, feels like, hey, we've been doing this long enough, and we wanna get this done and get it going, that's perfectly fine. We'll work through that. Uh, the thought was just uh, you know, without knowing whether the planning position is definitely gonna be filled by July first, um, you know, that, that's the only, I guess, hesitation, is if for some reason that doesn't happen, uh, then it's gonna put um, certain people in administration in the, in the continued role of planner.
That's okay.
And so, we're just bringing that to council's attention, but listen, I know people are not only excited that this ordinance is gonna be passed, but I think uh, have also been pretty patient with the city and our staff in terms of trying to get it done and get it, get it done right. So, I can certainly understand council wanting this um, to get rolled out, and to get rolled out as soon as we can in light of uh, the amount of time we've spent on it. Uh, so, if you guys want it uh, ten days uh, after you pass it, which is what we always do, then we will uh, you know, as a group, we will do our best to make sure we're prepared to get it done, and we will get it done. Uh, we'll take whatever direction you tell us, and we'll make sure it gets done.
But, and I get that, and I, I appreciate all the work that goes into it, and I understand we're a planner. How about if we do this? How about if I suggest this, that we, that we forge forward? Let, let's get done with what we can get done with the, the main priorities of the project. Um, and, and then when it's, so, and you guys are gonna be involved in that, so when you put it on the agenda for our next meeting in June, um, how, how about by, maybe then you'll, maybe then you'll have a little bit better picture of how many, how much more time it's gonna be. Um, you might even know more about um, uh, the position of the planner and whether that's gonna be filled, so. So why don't we put it on the next agenda, and then, at that time, on that Friday before, you know, before it's published, just maybe present to us, hey, we're gonna need, we're gonna need twenty days, we're gonna need, you know, thirty days. Something that's, something that's as realistic as possible.
Okay, that sounds.
Does that sound reasonable?
It does.
Sounds good.
Yes.
All right. And thanks again for the, all the work. It, it's, it, it looks good. It's, it's getting closer. Um, so, I, I think we're good with that, and, and so that was um, that's really nothing that we need to vote on either. Uh, that was just kind of an update of where we're at. Um. So now we're at fifteen, we're at the closed session. Mike, you wanna take care of that for us?
I move, we adjourn to closed session to discuss settlement negotiations uh, regarding total rental care versus the City of Alpenet, uh, tribunal case, tax tribunal case.
Johnson, second.
Clerk Sowe calling rule. Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Noak?
Noak, yes.
Walagora?
Walagora, aye.
Hess?
Hess, yes.
And Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
Motion carried.
All right, see you all in a minute.
All right. Everybody beats a mayor.
Heyo. Made it back this time.
We made it back. The mayor has not made it as of yet.
He was.
You are here, okay. Councilman Noak.
I'm here.
Johnson, second. Roll set.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, guys.
Have a night. Bye.
Bye now.